All right, you're good to go.
Okay, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the March 23 full Planning Commission meeting. And we will begin with a land acknowledgement. On behalf of the Seattle Planning Commission, we'd like to actively recognize that we are on indigenous land, the traditional and current territories of the Coast Salish people, who have lived on and stewarded these lands since the beginning of time and continue to do so today. We offer land acknowledgement because native land was taken by force and colonized to form the United States as we know it today. Through this process, which is ongoing through systematic oppression, native identity, history, and land ownership has been ignored by colonizers. And attempted to be erased. Land acknowledgement is the first step in opposing the systematic oppression and historic erasure of native people and native land ownership. So some announcements, again, welcome. We're happy to make all commission meetings open to the public, but please note, the planning commission does not hold public hearings as we are an advisory body. We provide recommendations to elected leaders who in turn make the actual decisions, and we encourage individuals and organizations to provide their comments appropriately to elected officials. This meeting is a hybrid meeting where some individuals are participating remotely, while others are participating in person in the boards and commissions room at Seattle's City Hall. So I would next like to ask commissioners to review our revised Color Brave space norms that are now up on the screen. And I'd like to invite a commissioner to read one aloud. Do I have a volunteer?
I'm happy to. This is Lauren.
Is that Lauren? Great, Lauren, thanks.
Hi. Yeah, keep focused on our collective goal, create racial justice through Black liberation and native sovereignty.
Great, thanks, Lauren. How about one more? Is there one more person who would like to read one of our Color Brave space norms?
I can, this is Rose.
Thanks, Rose.
Look for learning and commit to learning in public. Avoid playing the devil's advocate that upholds white dominant power structures.
Great, thank you, Rose. Thank you both Lauren and Rose. So on our agenda today, we have two items. One is a discussion on the commission's draft recommendations related to the Industrial and Maritime Strategy Comprehensive Plan amendments, soon to be considered by city council. And we will have a briefing by city staff on the recently completed Racial and Social Equity Index. But before we get to those items, we need to approve our minutes from our March 9 meeting. And so I do, I have a motion to approve.
David will so move.
Thank you, David. Do I have a second? Thank you, Rocky. Are there any changes, proposed changes or amendments to the minutes as drafted? Okay, hearing none, I will call for a vote, all in favor of approving the minutes as drafted. Please say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Are there any abstentions? Okay, thank you all. The minutes have been approved. Upcoming commission meetings. The next Housing and Neighborhoods Committee meeting is Thursday, April 6th, from 7:30 to 9:00 a.m. Our next full commission meeting is scheduled for Thursday, April 13th, from 3:00 to 5:30 p.m. And as is the case with this meeting, these meetings will be held both in person in the boards and commissions room and via Microsoft Teams. And now I'm going to pass it off to Vanessa for some additional announcements.
Thank you, Rick. Just want to remind all commissioners and any members of the public listening that during the meeting, there will be opportunities for questions first and then comments from commissioners. We will be using the chat function of MS Teams for all commissioners to join the discussion queue, including Lauren, who is the sole commissioner, joining us here in person. You can just let me know and I will add you to the queue. Please do remember that the chat function is not for substantive comment, but rather to be recognized to speak as members of the public cannot access the chat. Typically, I read any public comment emailed to me prior to the meeting at the end of our meeting. I have received no public meeting in advance of this meeting. A public comment in advance of this meeting. There is a chance that we may have a member of the public showing up before the end of the meeting. And if that happens, I will let you know, Rick, as co-chair. Just a reminder that we are now recording our full commission meetings and posting them via YouTube to our website the following day. Just please note that these recordings are not in lieu of our minutes, and our minutes stand as our public record of our meeting, and they will be approved at our next meeting. And with that, I am pleased to present the leadership slate for the next year, based on nominations submitted by commissioners. Before doing so, I would like to thank this past year's co-chairs for their leadership, Rick and Jamie, Matt and Radica, and David and Alana. So as a reminder, I asked for nominations from all commissioners for the leadership slate that will go from now until next March. And drumroll, please. The slate is as follows, next slide. Please. So the proposed leadership slate, again, based on the nominations of your peers, commissioners, commission co-chairs, Michaela Daffron and David Goldberg, Housing and Neighborhoods Committee co-chairs, Matt Hutchins and Radica Nair, Land Use and Transportation Committee co-chairs, Caleb Tualde and Rose Lucellowitz. Hey, yay. So thank you all for your willingness to step up and for all commissioners who submitted nominations. I would now like to call for a vote, all in favor of the proposed leadership slate. Say aye.
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 Any extensions? Any opposed? Thank you all, the slate wins by a landslide. And again, just want to thank everybody for their past service, continued service, both as leaders on the commission and as commission members. The leadership slate will take effect as of tomorrow, although we don't have another full commission meeting or a commission meeting until the Housing and Neighborhoods meeting that Rick referenced earlier. So with that, I'd like to ask Rick to start the introductions. We've got about four minutes to do so, so let's keep it on the shorter side. We are also going to do another short round of introductions when we get to our second agenda topic. As one of the presenters, it's the first time Dave will be presenting to the commission, and I want to give them a chance to get to meet you all. So, Rick, please start, and then I think we'll be able to popcorn it based on commissioner names in MS Teams as opposed to the live presenter numbers.
Okay, thanks, Vanessa. I'm Rick Mohler. I use he/him pronouns. I live between Wallingford and Green Lake. I am an architect and I teach at the University of Washington. This is my last day as co-chair of the commission. Wanted to, it's been my honor and privilege to serve the commission in that capacity, and I wanted to thank Jamie for being a great co-chair, keeping it real and keeping it fun. So I'll pass it off to Jamie.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Jamie Struble, I use she/her pronouns. And I've, it's been my honor to also co-chair the commission the last couple of years with Rick. Really excited about our new leadership. And thank you all for your patience and service as we've navigated the last couple of years and that transition to virtual and hybrid and all of those challenges that came with the, with our city also navigating some, some big changes and shifts and challenges for all of our communities. So, thank you. But my usual, my usual intro, I live in the future 130th Station area and work in climate change and environmental justice. And yes, and I'll pass it.
Sweet. Hi, I'm Lauren, I use she/her. I live in Mount Baker and I'm a transportation planner. Caleb.
Hi, my name's Caleb Tualde. He/him pronouns. I live in Columbia City and work at Reiner Scholars. I'll pass it off to David.
Good morning, David Goldberg, he/him pronouns. I live in the Wallingford Urban Village and work for the State Department of Transportation. Looking forward to working with Michaela to chair the commission over the next year. And I will pass it to Rose.
Morning, Rose Lucellowitz. My pronouns are she/her. I live up north in Lipton Springs and I work as a wetland biologist and permitting specialist of project engineering. Maybe Dalton?
Yeah. Hey, everyone, my name is Dalton Owens, pronouns he/him. I live in the Ballard neighborhood and I work as a project engineer for Venture General Contracting. And I will pass it to Matt, have you got?
Nope. This is Matt Hutchins, I use he/him pronouns. I'm an architect and I live in West Seattle. I'll pass it to Deanna.
Good morning, Deanna Quintanar, she/her pronouns. I live in Capitol Hill and I am a multimodal transportation planner. I can't see beyond a few faces, so I'm not sure who else is on.
How about Michaela?
Michaela.
Good morning, Michaela Daffron, she/her pronouns. I live in Capitol Hill and I work in affordable housing policy and planning. And I'll pass it to Rocky.
Good morning, I'm Rocky De Herrera. He/him pronouns. I live in Finney Ridge and work as an intel housing developer, for-profit housing developer. And I, I don't know who else is out there.
I think, I think that's it. The commissioners?
Okay. I'll pick on John.
Thanks, Rocky. Good morning, everybody, I'm John Hoy. I use he/him pronouns. I'm staff to the planning commission.
Robin?
Robin McGonigal, she/her, they/them pronouns. I live on Vashon Island and I'm staff to the commission.
Olivia?
Morning, everyone. I'm Olivia Baker, I use she/her pronouns, and I'm staff to the planning commission.
Thanks all. Vanessa Murdock, I use she/her pronouns. I'm also staff to the commission. Thank you all for being here. We have one attendee who, I'm not sure if it's a commissioner calling in. So the number 206-853-8855. Can you please let us know if you are a planning commissioner? Hearing nothing, I do not believe they are, but welcome to the meeting anyway. And with that, I will turn it back to Rick.
Thanks, Vanessa. So next up, commission staff will lead a discussion on our draft letter regarding proposed comprehensive plan amendments related to the industrial and maritime strategy. We have 30 minutes for this item. As a reminder, the proposed comprehensive plan amendments are the first step in adopting and implementing the industrial and maritime strategy recommendations. These amendments and regulatory changes will be considered this spring by the city council's land use committee. The commission's comment letter will be focused exclusively on the proposed comprehensive plan amendments. We are not commenting on the specifics of the industrial and maritime strategy itself. The stakeholder advisory group's recommendations were documented in a final report and studied in both the draft and final EIS. And these will provide an overview of the proposed comprehensive plan amendments related to the industrial maritime strategy to be considered by city council this spring. This is the third of four meetings when we will discuss, develop, and approve a comment letter on the proposed amendments for the, for the consideration of city council. So following John's presentation, I will facilitate our discussion by first asking each commissioner in the meeting of any questions for clarification. If you do not have a question, feel free to pass, and I will circle back to you at the end of the questions portions of our discussion. So following questions will begin our discussion. Please note your name and general topic issue of your comment in the chat. Vanessa will assist in monitoring the queue and ensuring all commissioners have the opportunity to participate in the discussion. And so now I am going to hand it over to John.
Thank you, Rick. Thanks for those introductory comments. I did not include much of that in the slides, so I'm glad you covered that. So I have a limited number of slides that focuses almost exclusively on some of the most substantive changes to the letter since we met two weeks ago. Libby, you can go to the next slide, please. I look forward to the discussion today. So just as a reminder, Rick mentioned we are, we will have had four meetings total by the time this letter is approved. We first talked about this back on February 23rd, and then a staff draft letter was introduced at the March 9th full commission meeting two weeks ago. Changes were made based on that, that discussion at the March 9th meeting. Thanks to the two commissioners that provided edits and suggestions and comments. And those are incorporated into the revised draft letter that went out on Monday, March 20th. I sent that letter out again yesterday, so you should have it in your inbox. And please refer to the letter as needed as I go through the proposed edits. And I will talk about the next steps at the end of my presentation. But just to keep it in mind that we will be taking action on this letter on the, at the April 13th full commission meeting. So this is, today is really the last opportunity for substantive discussion on the proposed letter, because we do need to send it off after the 13th, April 13th meeting in order for it to go to the city council land use committee prior to their first public hearing on this topic. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, when you, when you review the letter, you will see some changes, all in track changes. They should show up as red strikeouts and underlines. I would characterize many of the edits as minor edits in the following sections. The introduction, the equity and environmental justice section, and the climate change resilience section. I'm not going to go through all of those changes. Today, you have them in your, in your inbox. You have them in the letter, you can refer to those. I will, however, focus on the more substantive edits to the following sections. Land use, element, transportation, shoreline areas, and cultural resources. Let's jump in. Next slide, please. So in the land use element section of the letter, which is the longest and the most substantive, because that's where the most proposed policy changes are. There were several suggested edits. I'll focus first on the section called New Industrial Zones. The proposed edit clarifies, when talking about the new industry and innovation and urban industrial zones, there was a proposed goal stating that those support employment-dense emerging industries that require greater flexibility in the range of onsite uses and activities. A proposed edit was suggested in red that states, "These new zones represent the evolving future of industry and are intended to respond to issues, challenges, and opportunities for the maritime and industrial sectors and adjacent communities." Next slide. In the section that describes the industry and innovation zone, there was a suggested edit that reads, "The planning commission has reviewed the proposed revision to the following existing policy related to parking and loading requirements in industrial zones. We recommend more definitive language than, quote, 'consider limiting...'" "...dot-dot-dot," such as, "limit parking in the industry and innovation zone." You will see the text of that revision below, it's Land Use Policy 10 dot New 14, which reads, "Set parking and loading requirements in industrial zones." And then I've, I've left out a little bit of that policy for space. And it reads, "Consider limiting parking in the industry and innovation zone located in the vicinity of high-capacity transit stations." Next slide. Following that edit, I believe it's directly after that edit, again, in the industry and innovation section, it says, "As these zones are located around the future light rail stations and are intended to leverage significant transit investments, the city should discourage parking of non-industrial vehicles and encourage workers to use alternatives such as walking, biking, and other non-motorized modes." Next slide. In the housing section of the land use element in the letter, we have a new, a few new sentences that were suggested. "While the planning commission supports increasing housing choice throughout residential areas of the city, we remain concerned about providing housing options in industrial areas, especially because those most likely to live in units targeted to industry-related workers will be cost-burdened, low-income households or moderate-income households who cannot afford housing options elsewhere in the city. This would result in perpetuating environmental injustice issues and ensuring the residents in these communities lack access to neighborhood amenities and opportunity that all Seattleites, no matter their income, deserve. We understand that the time to debate this issue has passed and offer our comments below in hopes of improving implementation of this policy." Next slide. So the, the comments below include this statement, where we say, in the previous draft, it had, "The planning commission has consistently voiced our ongoing concerns related to the environmental health impacts of housing in proximity to air quality and noise emissions from industrial and maritime uses. We encourage the city to be more explicit in, with the edit, acknowledging and addressing the historic and ongoing environmental injustice related to locating housing in or adjacent to industrial areas that has had disproportionate impacts on low-income and BIPOC populations." Next slide. Immediately following that statement, says, "We recommend the city consider the public health, health risks of industry-supported residential uses through environmental, through an environmental justice lens by identifying and mitigating any potential with a new addition of air quality, heat island, contamination was there previously, and noise is a new addition, impacts on future residential uses in or near industrial areas." Next slide, please. In the transportation section of the letter, we have, there are a few paragraphs, and we have one addition. In the paragraph that begins with freight mobility and access for workers are issues of critical importance for successful economic development. It goes on to say, "The planning commission recommends a review of existing transportation policies related to freight mobility and logistics. A new sentence was recommended. We recommend the city work with private industry stakeholders and organizations such as the University of Washington's Urban Freight Lab to address issues related to the proliferation of smaller delivery vehicles and the need for dedicated loading zones, curb space, and/or parking." Next slide. Again, also in the transportation section, there was a proposed edit. This one is a little bit messier, so I'm just going to read the way it is proposed to be revised. You can see the strikeouts in red. "The city should continue to make important investments in and enhancements to quality multimodal access, connections, and infrastructure, including sidewalks, transit access, bike lanes, and trails that get workers to their jobs. The hundreds of workers needing to access future employment centers located within industrial and maritime areas deserve significant multimodal improvements that both improve the speed and ease of their transportation options while relieving car congestion on our streets." Next slide. Believe this is the last change in the transportation section. I'll just read it as revised. "The planning commission recommends policy language prioritizing walking and biking connections in industrial areas in a thoughtful manner that both completes these missing links while minimizing conflicts with freight and other motorized traffic. Examples include investments in sidewalks, bike share, motorized vehicle speed reduction, and/or lane separators along highly-trafficked pedestrian and bicycle routes, and last-mile connections, especially around future light rail stations." Next slide. In the section of the letter on shoreline areas, there is a proposed addition to the, an existing sentence. The sentence reads, "The city should add or revise policy language encouraging restoration of lands and shorelines with industrial contamination to reduce public health concerns, including contaminants in fish from waterways adjacent to industrial areas, with the new addition of, especially within the watershed of urban industrial areas, where limited housing will be permitted." Next slide. Believe this is the last slide. In the section on cultural resources of the letter, a new sentence was proposed in that section that reads, "In cases where the city cannot prevent unavoidable new or continued impacts of industrial uses or other practices that block the legally protected rights of these tribes to fishing or harvesting at their usual and accustomed grounds, we recommend that the city develop and adopt a policy framework for meaningful mitigation strategies in direct collaboration with affected tribes." Next slide. So those are, those are the most substantive proposed edits. You would benefit from reading them within the context of the letter. I, I hope you will take time to do that. Just as far as next steps, so today I've presented the revised draft letter. Today is really the last opportunity for substantive discussion, but I will give you all an opportunity to send additional comments and send any suggestion, suggested revisions to me by close of business next Friday, March 31st. I will incorporate any additional revisions and send it out to you one week before the April 13th commission meeting. And at that commission meeting, we will need to take action. And hopefully, we will not have any additional comments or discussion, and we can take quick action on that letter in order to send it off to the city council land use committee in, in, in advance of their public hearing. So that's it for me. I think we're on to clarifying questions.
Thank you, John. Yes, we are on to clarifying questions, and then we will, once we get through those, we'll move into substantive discussions. So I'm going to go through the round of those who have not yet passed, starting with Lauren. Any clarifying questions?
Yeah, thanks. John, is, is the letter organized based on the policy itself? Like, we're addressing the sections of equity and environmental justice, transport, housing, transportation? Is it organized to mirror the policy?
For the most part, yes.
Okay.
There is a section at the top of the letter that is on equity and environmental justice.
Which, perfect.
Which is not, yeah, which is not a policy area. But consistent with the commission's previous comments on this topic,
true, true.
I felt it was important to start with that. And then the letter goes in order through the land use policies that are either revised or added.
Yeah.
The sections towards the bottom of the letter on climate change, shoreline areas, cultural resources are other areas for, for the city council to consider based on previous comments of the commission.
Okay. Yeah, I just asked because, you know, that some, some, some of the topics are more substantive. Okay. Yeah. I just asked because you know that some, some, some of the topics are more substantive than, than others. And so I just wanted to understand the logic of the organization.
Yeah, I went through the proposed policy changes two meetings ago and most of those are in the land use policies.
Yeah.
There are a few in other, in other elements of the conflict.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Lauren. Moving on to Rocky.
I have one clarifying question. I'm curious, I don't see a lot of talk in the letter about jobs. And is that because the economic development policies aren't changing? They've been consistent over the years? Or is it just that we focused on, we've kind of taken that for granted and focused on other things?
There, we have not seen any proposed changes to policies related to economic development. Though we're primarily responding to changes that are proposed on land use and the new zones and I think there are some references to workers and the, the expansion of jobs and as a result of the industrial maritime strategy. But there's no specific references to any economic development policies.
I'll probably send some edits just at the introduction of our letter. I agree, it doesn't need to be a separate section, but maybe some strengthening makes sense. Thanks.
Thanks, Rocky. Deanna.
Yes, this is a, maybe just a minor suggestion and it's fine if it's not incorporated, but I would recommend that in the freight paragraph that noted, working with the UW Freight Lab, that that collaboration should also involve the agency with jurisdictional authority over this, which is SDOT. And so just kind of mentioning, you know, it's the way we're describing it is really what is now known as curbside management strategies. So just adding, if commissioners agree to that, to that, you know, working with private industry stakeholders, organizations such as, you know, the UW Urban Freight Lab in conjunction with, you know, SDOT to address issues related to the proliferation of smaller delivery vehicles and the need for curbside management strategies, including blah, blah, blah.
Thank you. Any other clarifying questions?
David is still on the list.
Got to know whether that was to Deanna or me. This is minor one, two, on page three. We're suggesting we review the proposed revision to the following policy, recommend more prescriptive language than quote, consider using, dot, 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 close quote, such as quote, use the urban industrial and then we ellipses. And I remember some conversation about the buffer zone designation going away. And so it seems to me that the word buffer should be eliminated too. So I'm wondering if we could just say use the urban industrial zones and, and then the ellipses. Unless there was some reason to leave buffer in there.
David, can you clarify? Are you in the urban industrial section of the letter?
It's page three of your draft, yes.
The bottom of the page?
Yeah. New industrial zones.
Where it says, we have reviewed.
Yes, that's the section. That's, yeah.
Okay.
Is there a reason to leave buffer or? Is there, Rocky?
Yeah, well Vanessa explained it, I think, before that they left it in there because technically that buffer zone hasn't gone away yet. And so I think later on it will come out as a cleanup. Is that true, Vanessa?
Yes.
Thanks, Rocky. That is true.
Right.
That it's going to take a while to fully replace the industrial, the existing industrial buffer zone with the new urban industrial zone.
Okay. Got it. Yeah.
That's why it's in there still.
All right. That's all I had. Thanks.
Thanks, David. Lauren.
Are we done with the clarifying question part?
We, yeah, sorry. We are done with the clarifying question part and you are now permitted to actually comment on substance.
Amazing. Thank you. Thank you for all the work you put into this, John. This is mostly like a kudos comment. Cause it, I don't have any substantive changes to suggest, but I just want to commend the work of the commission that is like incredibly consistent with all of our many years long work on industrial lands. We submitted the report like 10, 10 years ago now on the protection of industrial lands and the fact that this policy is closing the loophole that this, that the commission won't have to deal with these one-off industrial land use changes is a huge milestone. And so I just want to recognize that. And I also just want to recognize the, the narrative in this letter because just kind of the high level arc of it, I was kind of jotting down as I was reading through. This letter is not only about just closing that loophole, but really about centering environmental justice and the burdens that low income and BIPOC communities, particularly Georgetown and those in the Duamish Valley, including South Park have borne with the Port of Seattle, Superfund sites and the legacy of harm associated with our industrial lands. And so I really appreciate that that is something that we can center as a commission. And this letter also for me casts a vision of what our industrial lands can be, which is transit oriented, highly dense employment districts. And the new, the three new zoning types that are proposed in this, in this update really expand and provide more nuance to the tools that we have as a city to determine land use in a way that better meets our goals. The kind of integral nature of the maritime and manufacturing center and their need for shoreline and water adjacent uses that will always be a central part of Seattle's economy. And so this protects that, but then also kind of looks more broadly with the industry and innovation and urban industrial zones to give us more tools around the reality that we are building light rail to some of these more restrictive land areas. Like we, we need to protect, we need to protect industrial uses, but we also can do it in a different way than we have in the past. And I really appreciate, it's kind of, it's down on page, page four, but I'm just, I'm channeling Grace Kim and that we can remember that urban industrial or maker space or creative uses, the ways for people to work and make things kind of that economic productivity, that doesn't just have to be in industrial lands. That can be throughout our urban villages, throughout residential zones in compatible ways. And so I appreciate that narrative. I also appreciate that the housing section leads with employment growth. It leads with the way that these zoning changes will bring more jobs and with that brings housing, more housing pressure and displacement pressures. And so I appreciate that we, that we start with that and that I, I really appreciate the comment whoever, whichever commissioner submitted it, just around the nuance of supporting housing near jobs, supporting housing near jobs and mobility choices like light rail. However, industrial workers, cost burdened households, the nuance of potentially perpetuating environmental injustices. This, it's been a really kind of sticky, you know, sticky topic and a kind of needle to thread. And so I think that this letter does that, does that really well. And then I also just appreciate, I think probably Deanna, it was your comments on the, in the transportation section that really bolstered that section around multimodal access and the level of investment that these areas are going to need. They don't have sidewalks. The, the concrete is crumbling and for these to become employment-rich, dense, transit-oriented areas that people can have choices for how to get around, especially workers. I just, I'm really proud of this letter and I did not contribute that much to it. And so I just want to say thank you to everyone for that, because it's, it's a beautiful, I think, narrative arc that captures a lot of our values.
Thank you, Lauren. Excellent comments. Your comments are getting some very positive attention in the, in the chat. I'm wondering now that the meetings are recorded, could we actually include an audio clip of your comments along with our letter, but.
Do we still go before council and stuff? Remember when we used to do that?
Yeah, again, it's up to you.
So we only have like two minutes left if, if, before our guests come to brief us. That's okay. I, I think it was, I think it was universally appreciated. Does anyone have a brief comment before we move on to our next agenda item? Okay. Hearing none are, have our guests arrived?
They have.
Rick, so Rick, can I just, just remind, Olivia, can you go to the last slide, please? Just the timeline, just as a reminder, I will be. So I sent the letter yesterday, so you should have it. I will send out a reminder, but please, if you do have any suggested revisions, please send them to me by the end of the day, next Friday, and then you will see a final draft around April 6th with the next commission agenda in anticipation of taking final action on the 13th. Thanks again to you all for helping to craft this and I, I feel like we're almost there.
Thank you, John, and thank you for your great work on the letter. So moving on to our next item. Diana Kanzaneri and Philip Carnell from the Office of Planning and Community Development are joining us to brief us on the recently completed racial and social equity index. Following Diana and Philip's presentation, I will facilitate our discussion by first asking each commissioner on the call for any questions of clarification. If you do not have a question, feel free to pass and I'll circle back at the end of the question portion for discussion. And then following questions will open the floor to more substantive comments. Please note your name and general topic issue of your comment in the chat. Vanessa will assist in monitoring the queue and ensuring all commissioners have the opportunity to participate in the discussion. So before handing it over to Diana and Philip, let's do a quick round of commissioner introductions. I guess I'll start. Welcome Diana and Philip. I'm Rick Muller. I use he/him pronouns. I live between Wallingford Green Lake. I am an architect and professor at the UW and I am on my final day of co-chairing the commission with Jamie Strobel. I guess I'll pass it off to Jamie.
Hi Diana and, and folks coming for this. I'm excited to hear about this briefing. I'm Jamie Strobel. I use she/her pronouns and I am my last day co-chairing with Rick. And live in the future 130th station area and I work in climate change and environmental justice and have worked on indicators. So excited to see where this goes. I'll pass to Michaela.
Hi Diana and Philip, Michaela Daffner, and she/her pronouns. I live in Capitol Hill. I work in affordable housing policy and planning. This is my last day not co-chairing the commission. Oh. And I'll pass it off to David.
David Goldberg, also my last day not chairing the commission, he/him pronouns. I live in the Wallingford Urban Village and work for the State Department of Transportation and Rocky, have you introduced this round yet?
Nope, I'm no, thanks, David. Rocky De Herrera, hi Diana. I'm sorry, I didn't get, is it Carnell? Looking forward here in the presentation, Diana, I know we, we crossed paths at the city years ago, so glad to see you. I'm glad you're still involved. I live in Finney Ridge. I work for an internal housing developer, Legacy Group Capital, and excited to see you. Let's see, who's next? Michaela? No, you just went. Rose?
Morning, Rose Lucello with, my pronouns are she/her. I live up north in Lipton Springs and I work for Jacobs Engineering as a wetland biologist and environmental permitting specialist. I'll pass it to Deanna.
Good morning and welcome Diana and Philip. I'm Diana Quintanar. I use she/her pronouns. I live in the Capitol Hill neighborhood and for my day job, I am a multimodal transportation planner. I'll pass it over to Matt. No, Matt gave it to me.
Nope. It was Rocky.
My name is Matt Hutchins. I use he/him pronouns. I'm an architect. I live in West Seattle. Dalton, are you the, maybe the last?
Yeah, I think me and Caleb might be next, but um, yeah, I'll hop in. Yeah, everyone, my name's Dalton Owens, pronouns he/him. I live in the Ballard neighborhood. I work in construction management as a project engineer for Venture General Contracting. And I'm excited to hear from you all today. So I'll pass it off to Caleb, who I believe is the last person.
Good morning. My name is Caleb Tollde. He/him pronouns and I live in Columbia City and work at Reiner Scholars in Education.
Awesome. Thank you so much for those introductions.
One more.
Oh, one more.
Lauren. Excited to hear from you Diana. I'm Philip, I'm Lauren. I'm she/her, Mount Baker, transportation planner. And thanks for your work on this. I often refer to the RAC and Social Equity Index in my work. Thank you.
Great. So Philip, and I really appreciate this opportunity to present on the city's racial and social equity index and the expanded set of resources that we produce to help folks access the index. I'm Diana Kanzaneri. I use she/her pronouns. I'm the city demographer and strategic advisor in long-range planning, work a lot in data. I'm, I'm going to introduce Philip. And I'm really beyond pleased to have Philip's partnership on this work. Philip joined OPCD's long-range planning team in the fall in the newly added, yay, position of planning and equity data analyst. And you know, the, the addition of this position is truly a game changer in enabling us to improve the regularity which, with which we update key data, including this index. And the combination of not only technical skills, but also policy and planning skills that Philip brings to this position, particularly on the housing front. You know, it's a huge boon to our capacity, super timely, especially with the work on the comprehensive plan update. And Philip, I'll pass it on to you to introduce yourself.
Well, what is there left to say?
I don't know.
I'll, I'll add that prior, prior to my work with the city of Seattle, I was, I was with Pierce County as an affordable housing development specialist in their human services department. And prior to that, I was doing very similar work at a company that does private planning for different NPOs, transit authorities, cities and counties in Georgia and Atlanta. And I guess at this point, I'll start, I'll start sharing my screen because I've got the presentation pulled up.
Great. Thank you. And Diana and Philip, I apologize. I did intend to say we have 40 minutes for this item. If we could reserve about 20 for discussion, that would be, that would be great. Thanks.
You bet. All right. So some of the things that we'll cover in our presentation are the purpose and design of the racial and social equity index, how to access the index and also examples of how city departments are using the index. Next slide, please. And then we're going to ask for your feedback because this is really a treat to be talking with you. We're especially interested in the thoughts that you all have on the mapping app that Philip will demonstrate, in particular, any suggestions for enhancing its usefulness for community stakeholders. We'd also love to hear your advice on how the racial and social equity index, which we abbreviate, by the way, by, by just calling it the RSE index, how the RSE index should be applied to help guide city policies and programs. In particular, we'd love any In particular, we'd love any suggestions that you have on how we can best use the index in our work to update and implement the comprehensive plan. So transitioning on the next slide to the background. And then again, next slide after that. So OPCD developed the Racial and Social Equity Index back in 2017. I led this effort in my role as a city demographer and worked in collaboration with staff in several additional departments who were asking for a shared set of map data showing where our RSJI, Racial and Social Justice Initiative, priority populations make up relatively large shares of neighborhood residents. We developed the RSE Index as a tool that departments can use as an in common resource to help inform the design, prioritization, and evaluation of programs, planning initiatives, and investments. And really, the index is intended as a starting point that departments can supplement as needed and use along with information that's relevant to their specific work. OPCD refreshes the index on a periodic basis so that it will be available as an ongoing resource. Next slide. Let's see. Yeah, next slide. So the RSE Index, and you're seeing, by the way, in this map, this is our updated, newly updated index. It's a composite of three sub-indices, each of which data on a small number of population characteristics or conditions related to, first, race and ethnicity, second, socioeconomic disadvantage, and health disadvantage and disability. I won't list all of the individual components that go into this, but you will have this PowerPoint as a resource, and you'll have, you know, links to all of the tools. We selected this combination of indicators after a lot of study, a lot of consideration, but I should note that, you know, due to the long history of segregation, disinvestment, and racial discrimination, somewhat different data points tend to show similar geographic patterns. All subjects in the Racial and Social Equity Index are mapped at the tract level. Then the tracts are ranked by percentile and divided into five categories. From the lowest priority quintile census tracts shown in Deke Hill to the highest priority in Maroon. Next, Philip is going to give you a look at how the geographic patterns compare for the three sub-indices. And they'll also demonstrate how to access the index using our new interactive mapping app.
Definitely. So as we kind of are looking at these three sub-indexes, what we'll see is that we've kind of made some clear design choices with how they're colored slightly differently from the composite index in themselves, as well as kind of for the race, ethnicity, English language learners and foreign-born sub-index is also on a scale through purple based on the percentage of individuals who are based on the value of the index. And in comparison to the socioeconomic disadvantage and the health disadvantage, which are on the green to red color scales. But what we really see throughout each of the sub-indexes is this north and south concentration of our highest equity priority areas, with the exception as well of the area around the U District in both the socioeconomic and the race and English language learners and foreign-born index. So this is kind of what it looks like between the three. And as Diana was talking about, they come together to create the composite index, which looks like this. And whenever we create the composite index, we present it in a bunch of different ways and with the intention of making this as accessible as possible to individuals both within and outside of the city government. So that includes a print-friendly PDF map at 11 by 17, as well as an ArcGIS online mapping app that's available both to individuals within the city as well as outside. So you don't have to have a ArcGIS online subscription in order to access this. We also have open data so that the data is made public, both for it really for anybody at that point. And then city staff can access the data as well through our internal GIS production server. Finally, the last big thing that we've made for this round is we've also produced a user's guide that goes into detail how it was produced, as well as the recommendations that Diana will bring up later on for how we should consider it in projects and programs in the city. So at this point, I'm going to try something out, which is a live run of how we can access it and look at it. It might be a little wonky, but we're going to see how this works. And the first thing I'll start off with is I've pulled up my Google Chrome right here, and I've basically typed in our our smart URL. So it's very easy, maps.seattle.gov/rseindex. This is meant to be kind of consistent throughout updates, and it will start to pull up the experience that we've got in ArcGIS Online. And as it's loading, what you'll see is we've got the primary map of the city in the middle with the composite index. If you look at the legend, then you can see the quintiles as well described here. But we've also got the details, which will go through the sub-indices that Diana mentioned earlier. We'll provide the links to the user guide as well as the printable PDF. And then at the bottom of the page also has things like documentation and considerations for how this should be used. Once we kind of, the other tabs on the left here include additional layers. So we've produced, of course, the composite index, but there might be other layers of interest such as population density, median household income, poverty rates for youth or for elderly. So we've kind of added in additional layers that individuals can look at and add to their map as they're kind of exploring. And for instance, if I just click on unemployed labor force, what we'll see here is graduated colors as well as shapes based on the number, as well as the rates. And this is pretty consistent throughout all of those. All of those kind of are look and have the same feel. I'll kind of zoom in now. Say, click on this census tract here. So this would be, I guess, North Beacon Hill, South Central District. Or South Central District, yeah. And what we'll see is on the left, we will have a couple of different profiles that'll pop up. I've got the employment status, which was that additional layer that I clicked on. But I've also got the Racial and Social Equity Composite Index for the census tract as well, too. This is entirely kind of responsive data that will show it for each census tract, and it will show the total population. And for each measure, it will show the percentage. For this case, we're looking at 63.2% of individuals in this census tract are persons of color. And compared to other tracts in the city, that means they're in the 89th highest percentile. And those percentiles are how we'll then calculate the sub-index as well as the index itself. So that's kind of a quick live demonstration of how we can look at it. If you see something that you like in here, you can also share it in the top right-hand corner or export it to your own PDF. And this is really to have, you know, anybody who's using it, the ability to make their own maps within this kind of guided system. Happy that that worked out, and there wasn't any big lags. So at this point, I'm going to go into a little bit of how examples of how other individuals and departments are using it. And I'll start with kind of saying this is an RSE index in action. In particular, what we're focusing on here is how other city departments are considering the RSE Index and their own programs, policies, or planning. The most recent big headliner in the news was the 2021 Tree Canopy Report that was recently released. It was developed by the City of Seattle Office of Sustainability and Environment with the University of Vermont's Spatial Analysis Lab. They used LiDAR methods, which is basically a radar overview of the city to detect the canopy in 2016 and 2021. And they overall found that there was a loss of 255 acres of tree canopy citywide. But they further considered what the equity portion, what the equity of this might be. They used the highest two priority areas to identify what they're calling environmental justice equity areas in this map here on the left. And they were, and using a couple of different graphs, they described how the tree canopy distribution loss was different based on where individuals were living. So if we're looking at the right here, what we saw was that from 2016 to 2021, overall, the environmental justice priority areas started off with a higher, with a lower baseline of tree coverage. But then they also saw the greatest loss compared to other neighborhoods. In particular, when they analyzed this among the quintiles themselves, and they found that, yes, while all quintiles did experience some tree coverage loss, there was much more substantial loss in the second highest disadvantage and the highest disadvantaged areas. One of the things that Diana will talk about is that this index is not meant to be the end of the conversation. It's meant to be the beginning of one. And I really liked what the authors went through in their text later on because they discussed that, if you can see, there are actually some areas that are kind of dark green in these EJ areas, as well as dark red in these EJ areas. The dark green means that there was tree canopy addition. And the dark red meant loss. And that dark green, they pointed to certain neighborhoods such as the East Duwamish Greenbelt, the Chaste Green Space, and the Longfellow Creek that are part of the city's Green Seattle Partnership and actually experienced some reforestation. But some of the darker, some of the darker purple, especially on the north side of town, that might have experienced some deforestation due to infrastructure buildout for the Link Light Rail. So it was the start of a conversation, but they really detailed went into, okay, what are we actually seeing here, which I think is just really taking that equity to a next step, but recognizing that we're trying to work on this baseline using the RSE Index. At this point, I will hand it back to Diana, and she'll go into the equitable development monitoring partnership.
Thank you, Philip. And I should note on the Tree Canopy Report, there's a whole planning process that's going to be happening. It's funded to start this year. And they'll be using the findings from the RSE Index to help figure out, you know, specific strategies for improving tree canopy and keeping tree canopy in the EJ priority areas. I will go through the examples from the equitable development monitoring program, like really quickly. And I want to say thank you again to the planning commission because you guys provided a lot of advice on the design of the monitoring program. These specific examples are from our community indicators report that OPCD published in 2020 to launch the monitoring program. For the place-based community indicators of equitable development, we overlaid the RSE Index on the community indicator maps. A graphic demonstrates that here to evaluate how those RSE priority areas are faring on the indicators relative to how other areas of Seattle are doing. Really similarly to, you know, what you saw in the tree canopy analysis. And also, as in the tree canopy analysis, what we did here was to take the two highest quintiles of the index and consider those as being the RSE priority areas. So here on this slide, we're looking at a couple of indicators, proximity to community-owned, community centers, city-owned community centers, and access to frequent transit within walking distance. For these measures, households in RSE priority areas have as good or slightly better access to community centers and somewhat better access to frequent transit. However, in our report, we talk a whole lot about how proximity, you know, is just one aspect of access. And we note reasons that community centers and transit are especially important to these populations. So the idea that just sort of equality in proximity does not necessarily, you know, comport with equity. Another important indicator of equitable development, of course, is homeownership. In Seattle, one-third of households of color own their own home compared to one-half of white households. As the large map shows, homeownership rates are generally highest as we know where single-family homes are prevalent and incomes are high and lower in RSE priority areas. However, one thing that we really dug into here, and it's a little hard to see from the little map, I'm sorry for that, but as symbolized by the pink dots in the small map, rates of homeownership among low-income households is highest in RSE priority areas. I mean, of, you know, of low-income households. Homeownership is highest in the RSE priorities areas that are located in southeast Seattle neighborhoods, signaling that, you know, these are places where homeownership help in maintaining homeownership is especially needed. I'm not going to go through all of these examples, but I did put together a few slides with links to additional examples from the work of a bunch of different departments. You'll have these as a resource when you get the PowerPoint. The first slide lists examples of the RSE Index's use in evaluation, monitoring, and reporting. Next slide, please. And this slide and the next two slides list examples in which the RSE Index is being used to focus programs, plans, and investments. And next slide. All right. So. Oh, I got the ketchup. Sorry. So considerations for using the index. Next slide, please. Before going to the discussion, I'd like to mention just very quickly some considerations that we encourage people to keep in mind when using the index. Philip already talked about how the index is best used as a starting point. And we encourage people to really consider, you know, additional data that's relevant to the specific purpose at hand. For example, a program focused on children or older adults, you know, needs to look at residents' ages in the different neighborhoods. Also, considering the index along with community indicators, program information, you know, and community assets is really important. The RSE Index itself does not show how many people are in an area or how much of an area's population is expected to grow. So we advise people when evaluating, you know, how the city is serving residents and identifying geographic priorities for allocating resources. You know, consider not only the RSE Index, but also look at population density alongside. You know, be aware You know, be aware of the city's growth strategy. It's also, of course, important to keep in mind that there's, there can be a lot of variation within census tracts, not just across them. And it's important also to point out the limitations in data um, that are available at a neighborhood level uh, really precluded us from incorporating within to the quantitative index um, metrics to prioritize some RSJI priority populations. So we weren't able to prioritize with this, within this index, LGBTQIA-plus persons, persons experiencing homelessness, and some other marginalized populations. So with that, we want to go ahead to the discussion. And we selfishly identify these specific topics that we'd like to get your feedback on. Thoughts on how to um, enhance the usefulness and awareness, awareness within the community of the RSE mapping app that Philip showed you? And especially importantly, what thoughts do you have about how we can best use the data in the RSE index to guide city programs and policies? Specifically, how we can use the index in our work to update and implement the com- the comprehensive plan? Thank you.
Thank you, Diana and Philip for that presentation. This is great work and some really exciting tool. Um, since you have asked us some specific questions and since we have about fifteen minutes left, I think I'm going to go through the question queue and see if if commissioners have specific feedback related to the questions that you've asked, starting with Rose.
Hi, uh, so I think some of my questions might help with your first bullet point on how to enhance usefulness and awareness. So my first question is, is it possible to incorporate some sort of comparison tool? I'd like, for example, to be able to click on one to five tracks at a time and be able to see them side by side so I can see the differences. And then also related to that is I think it would be really useful to have a flash screen pop up in the beginning to acknowledge all the things that you were talking about, about how it doesn't really tell us much about our houseless neighbors or about the LGBTQIA community or all that stuff. Just like really have it front and center, acknowledging what this can and cannot do. Let me be paused there, I have more, but spread it out.
Thank you. So um, I, since I'm kind of the lead on um, developing the ArcGIS online portion of it, uh, how we have considered the um, this current update was kind of making sure that we can get the processes in place and get the, get the data out there. Um, using this kind of more rudimentary web app that, that ArcGIS online makes. Um, we want to kind of take it and turn it into one of the, the more advanced ones. And I really like both of those ideas that, that you just mentioned. Um, as potential things for pop-ups in the beginning, whenever it first comes in, as well as um, like a, a comparison tool slash table type thing between the tracks.
Okay. Um, Jamie. And, and again, if, if one doesn't have a specific response, um, you can just pass.
Thanks, Eric. Uh, thank you, Philip and Diana, I really appreciate you all bringing this to us. And, and nice to e-meet you, Philip, we're excited to have your face today. Um, uh, I, I'm really excited about this tool and really excited that, that you all have made it um, accessible and have thought through a lot of these pieces. I agree with Rose's thing about um, having some sort of pop-up would be helpful. Um, the question I have, which is kind of related to your first bullet point here, um, is sometimes navigating ArcGIS online and that tool is not um, super accessible for all communities if you're not tech savvy. So I'm wondering, and I know you mentioned at some point, there was um, you know, oh, we have some of these as like PDFs you can download. Or um, is that the case for all of the sub-layers and different? Because I think that what's also helpful is some communities are wanting to access like all those different sub-layers of data that you've been talking about. Um, it, yeah, so I'm wondering, is that available? Is that something that people can download as like a PDF or a JPEG or um, something that could be printed so that people could like, share that with their community members at like a workshop or something? Um, so I'm just thinking about different ways that this could be pre- um, made accessible to different communities.
I think that's a, I think that's a great idea. And I think that that is something that um, I hadn't considered before and I'm more than happy to work on, thank you.
Thanks.
Great. Thanks, Jamie, Caleb.
I'll just pass for right now.
Okay, thanks Caleb, David.
Uh, yeah, um, Philip, welcome, I'm, I'm an Atlanta transplant myself, so love to uh, see who we know and all that when we get a chance. Um, this is really great stuff. I'm uh, particularly interested in traffic violence and um, looking at, uh, I know SDOT has done some mapping of um, uh, for Vision Zero, et cetera, on where, where collisions occur, what kind of collisions occur, what kind of injuries, what kind of fatalities, et cetera. And I would like to figure out how to overlay there, th- those maps with the RSE map. And so, I don't know if it's an easy thing to do, or if you've already done it, or if there's a place, you know, but that's the kind of thing that I would like to know how to do with this.
I can jump in just real quick and say that the, the, the top-down or top, what did they call it? Top-to-bottom analysis that they did for Vision Zero includes um, some maps that I think it's an aggregated look at um, collisions involving pedestrians. It, it doesn't sound like it's exactly what you're looking for, but um, we could get together with SDOT and see what data layers they have. And if you wanted to follow up and tell us more about your specific interests, we could, we could look at doing a mashup of those data.
And if it's okay, I'll, I'll just as well say, um, I think that, that, that gives me a good opportunity as well to talk about kind of part of us choosing the different sub-layers that we did for the online application was um, that we were really focusing on ones that we manage and regularly update and house, um, meaning within OPCD as opposed to other departments. Um, so, so the one, the layers that you see online are the ones that we continuously update year after year. Um, so I, I would imagine it wouldn't be within the app itself as opposed to, as Diana was talking about, a kind of a project in which we're able to incorporate both of those data sets.
Yeah, just, I guess my, my question probably goes to, you know, how among departments would you, would you merge data sets, right? How would the, how would the various departments with their own mapping use these to, to, to merge the two? So that's just throwing that out there, pass to the next person now.
Okay, thanks, David, we, we have a little less than ten minutes left, we probably won't get through all of the commissioners, so um, we will follow up with Diana and Philip afterwards. Um, so that we can make sure that all commissioners have an opportunity to, to comment, if not in the meeting. Michaela is next on the list.
Um, what is your maintenance schedule for the dashboard? Do you plan to push updates on a rolling basis as new information becomes available? Or do you kind of have a set, once a year, you're going to do a major update? Just curious how timely this information will be over time.
So our plan is generally to update the index every three years. In part, that's because most of the data in the index is actually multi-year data and things just don't, because they're like multi-year averages, they don't change that much. Um, however, there is like one, one indicator that is so frustratingly old. It's the one about life expectancy. And we don't have the, the data yet that, you know, incorporates what happened post-pandemic. It's all pre-pandemic.
Okay, Rocky.
So I haven't had a chance to play around with this, obviously, so my, my question might be ignorant, but I'll ask it anyway. Uh, I'm curious uh, with respect to displacement in uh, kind of underserved neighborhoods, if there's any sort of effort to bring in uh, permitting data, like MLS data. I'm just, and I'm talking about supply and demand for housing. Um, you know, I've heard some conversations about, you know, what areas of Seattle are uh, at a risk for displacement, and the answer is, it's, it's the entire city. Um, but I'm curious if folks are looking closely at kind of supply and demand, what's happening out there from a, a market standpoint, to really identify hotspots of where displacement's going to happen in a hurry. Um, and I, and I'm not sure how that works or, or what the ability is, but uh, we, we, we're, we're tracking permit applications in my, in my day job, I should say. Um, and we really see a big problem coming. And people don't seem to care, or, or at least understand.
So we've got um, two sort of mapping efforts related to displacement risk. One is sort of a medium-term kind of displacement risk map that we use to help guide um, our growth strategy and the comprehensive plan. Nick Welch um, in OPCD updates that. And he has a preliminary version of that, I can stick that into the chat in a moment. We also have, as part of our Equitable Development Monitoring Program, that we didn't show, um, a set of heightened um, displacement risk indicators that are meant to be um, really looking at sort of um, changes that are happening in closer to real time as far as ramping up displacement risk for certain households or certain neighborhoods in the city. And I can also put a link to those in the chat.
Hey, uh, Diana.
Thank you, Diana and Philip, this is fantastic, I can't wait to, to play with this a little bit more. Um, um, so uh, Rocky and Diana, you all stole my thunder. I was going to ask about the opportunity to layer this with the Displacement Risk Index that you all maintain. I think that's kind of a very logical uh, uh, place to kind of host both maps and efforts. Um, and so uh, really look forward to, to seeing how they, they overlay because I think that tells a really compelling story around where attention should be placed in terms of uh, changes that could be proposed vis-à-vis the comprehensive plan, right? So uh, and with regards to that, I, in using um, the Displacement Risk Index, uh, Displacement Risk uh, Index, yes. I remember a big challenge was kind of a time lapse comparison. And so I'm curious whether the RSE is also going to be able to show um, you know, what would this index look like if we were using different points in time and data? Uh, and, and be able to see just the time lapse, almost just kind of, you know, in terms of the usability, uh, Philip, you know. And I'm sure that this could be a, you know, this is maybe version one, version two could consider this, but something where you could select, you know, five-year or ten-year change uh, and see how the map would change by selecting certain of the layers or um, particularly, or you know, just the composite uh, index. So I think a time lapse perspective would be fantastic, just to understand how, the change, just visually.
Thanks, Diana, Lauren.
I'm going to pass because I've taken up a lot of space today and I'm sending an email with a comment, but Diana, Philip, or Diana and Philip, thank you. Excited to use this data more.
Okay, we have a couple minutes left, uh, Matt, we actually made it to the end of the list. Great, um, yeah, I'm, I'm super excited to, to dig into this as well. Um, I think, yeah, the difficulty is like now we want to make all these other linkages to other maps that we know and have that be, you know, how do we compare, you know, the anti-displacement to any of these other layers to, you know, to Vision Zero, the tree canopy, you know, all these things. This, this just unlocks a lot of um, uh, information and ways to, to look about this, look at the city. So I think that, I think that top, being able to look at things over time uh, is, is important. And then I just want to correlate it to also thinking about how we're going to, you know, approach some of these decisions about land use, like being able to underlay uh, land use or underlay kind of elements of fifteen-minute neighborhoods, you know, like what you have with the community centers, but also, you know, walk, walk scores, bike scores, that sort of thing, too. That's it. Well, thank you, Diana and Philip, for presenting this really exciting work. I think you can sense the enthusiasm here. And of course, part of the reflection of that enthusiasm is that we just want more and more. We want this tool to do everything. Um, so I think you will be hearing from commissioners who are going to follow up with some more suggestions. I know I have, so I, I get, I, you talk about community stakeholders. I can think of many, many, many colleagues and students at the university who will jump at the chance to use this tool. So let's talk about how we can make sure that they all know about it.
Excellent, and thank you, this has been a real treat to get your advice and ideas.
Yeah, thank you so much for having us.
Yeah, and Philip, it was great, great to meet you, look forward to uh, crossing paths again here in a future commission meeting.
And I just want to call attention to the Sorry, I just want to call attention to um, the chat, there's been a lot of great resources that have been put in there. Um, so for commissioners who are on the call, you might want to reference that. And we'll also include those resources in the draft minutes, which will be approved uh, at the next meeting. So, and please reach out to me directly with any questions or follow-up for Diana and Philip. And then I'll funnel all of your questions and comments to them and then um, provide you all with answers and links and all that good stuff.
Great, thanks Vanessa. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, commissioners, thank you guests. Thanks, everybody, thank you.